And what's the time, 7:04? I don't have my watch on.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll call them, we'll call the meeting to order at 7:04 PM. If we can all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okey dokey. All right, so we'll move on to item number three. Rory, do we have any public comments? Did we receive anything?
Not that I saw.
That's what I saw, okay. All right, item number four, approve the minutes of the April 21st, 2009. All right, so, motion by Anne Marie, was there a second?
Second.
Second by Al. I was ready. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Hi.
Rory, did you put me on mid?
We just heard you. So.
Program allows two things essentially, that the delinquent portion of taxes shall be subject to interest at 3% for 90 days from the time when such becomes due until paid for taxes due and payable from March 10th through and including July 1st, 2020. And then two, any taxes that were delinquent honor prior to March 10th shall be subject to interest at 3% for 90 days from April 1st, 2020. Following the expiration, the 90-day period, the portion that remains delinquent shall be subject to interest and penalties as previously described. It does, in Rich's memo, it goes on, it talks a little about landlord eligibility, so what a landlord would need to do to qualify. It also defines payments that are made by financial institutions, banks, mortgage service companies, credit unions, and so on and so forth. So that was Rich's memo, I know you all have had an opportunity to review that. I just wanted to go through it quickly for anyone who may be listening. As you know, Rich prepared two resolutions, which the board will need to take action on at least one of them, for, per the executive order by the governor. But before I do that, I want to have Rich weigh in, and then I'll give some feedback, and then we'll open it up for discussion. So Rich, is there anything I missed or anything you want to add?
Thank you, Kirk. I just want to add that, based upon the form for the deferral program put out by OPM, it appears that the eligibility criteria will be, for a resident, a household that has suffered a reduction in income of at least 20% due to COVID-19. And the applicant would make a representation that since March 10th, 2020, the applicant has been either been furloughed without pay, had his or her hours significantly reduced, or been rendered unemployed. As a result, there is at least a 20% reduction in the applicant's household income. That appears to be the eligibility criteria for a resident. For businesses and nonprofits, revenue is expected to decrease at least 30% in the March to June 2020 period versus the March to June 2019 period for the specific property. That, and then our further representations that go on after that, but that appears to be, as far as we know, the eligibility criteria for the program at this time.
Okay. So anyone have any specific questions on what I initially touched base on, and then what Rich has followed up with? So if you do, raise your hand, and I'll call on you one at a time. And nobody seems to have any questions. Trish, you don't have any question? You gotta be defend, all right, Chris, go ahead.
I guess the one question I have is, is this an either/or type situation? Or can we approve the institution of both these?
It, that is a good, you want me to take it, Kirk?
Yeah, Chris, Rich, go ahead, yeah.
Rich Patralla, the town council, it is not an either/or. You have to do minimally one, you have to do at least one, but you can choose both.
Any other questions?
One.
Bob?
Oftenly. So will this be a process that we have to take on as the town for the people, or how will this work as a process? The applicant to be able to, who does the evaluation of where the, that person is?
Rich, correct me if I'm wrong, but there will be an application process that will go through that will come into the tax collector's office. What the timing of, and mechanics of that exactly are, I'm not sure. But at that point, we would determine who was eligible and who was not. And so essentially, people would apply, they're either approved or they're not.
Okay, so.
If we, if we went with deferral for just people who have issues with the COVID, there is also an option where we could defer everyone's payments. But that is a very risky move for the overall finances of the town, and I don't believe someone like myself, as an example, who has a job, who's still being paid, should have the ability to defer taxes.
Right, no, understood.
That's just my personal opinion, yeah.
No, no, I understand that, I just wanted to understand that there will be a process, and it's going to be our front, and we would front end that process through the tax collector's department.
Yes, correct.
Thank you.
Chris?
Chris Bowen. Who would determine eligibility? In other words, there's going to be an application process that goes into the tax collector's office. Will that be forwarded to the state? Or is somebody in town hall going to be having a yea or nay on eligibility?
My understanding is that we will be the decision makers based on information that will be provided in their application.
When we, when you say "we," who is "we"?
Of the town.
Who in the town?
I would assume it would be the tax collector. What else? Okay, that's on, Al.
I had a quick follow-up, Kirk. Would it be the tax collector and a small group, a committee? Or would it be one person having the ultimate duty and authority under their jurisdiction by statute to make that decision?
I'm not 100% sure, unless there was any guidance in the OPM document. But Rich, do you know of any guidance that was provided specifically to that?
Not to that level of detail. This, there may be further guidance, I mean, there's further guidance all the time, as, as you know, there was guidance issued recently on another executive order, so it continues, it's evolving. I wouldn't be surprised if there's further guidance out of OPM when we get closer to the collection date.
And I'm going to venture to guess too, that since every town and city is required to provide this information to OPM by the 25th, at some point after the 25th, we'll start to roll out some more information with what's going on.
Makes sense.
Okay, thank you, Kirk.
Thank you, Al. Chris?
Just to, Chris Bowen, just to kind of piggyback off Mr. Bruno's question, is there an appeals process in place?
As of now, no, because again, we haven't gotten that guidance from OPM yet. This is all determined through an executive order by the governor's office, so.
Do we have avenues, do we have avenues, I apologize, Kirk?
No, it's okay.
Do we have avenues to communicate the need for that kind of guidance?
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Okay, very well, yes, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions, comments on the deferral part? All right, so now we'll talk a little bit about the, the low-interest rate program part. I'm going to give my two cents, this was something that was created by people that have absolutely no idea how municipal governments operate. To put our tax collector in a situation to have multiple interest rates going at one time is going to put a tremendous burden and strain on an office that only has two people. Plus, in, again, in my opinion, if you haven't paid your taxes yet and you're behind, you're behind for a specific reason that has nothing to do with the virus. I'm not 100% sure, in my opinion, that you should get some benefit just because the virus is, is going on. So, in my opinion, we should not be having this interest rate program, but again, I'm one of seven votes, so I want everybody to have an opportunity to kind of voice their opinion, ask questions of Rich, and then we can go from there, because we'll vote on each resolution separately, or only one, if that's the case. Chris?
Chris Bowen, the entire reasoning for all of my questions so far is that this is both a burden and a potential, I don't want to say liability, but this is a lot for one or two people to be making decisions on, decisions based on need, decisions based on the interest rate program, various interest rates. I understand that we have to, per the executive order, initiate one of these, but to ask municipalities to put this burden on already understaffed offices seems a little bit precious. From the state, they need to clarify this a little bit better. And I'm just not comfortable with any of these steps going forward, because it puts way too much burden on one person, really.
I'm, again, I'm going to expect that once everyone reports in by the 25th, I'm sorry, once everyone reports in by the 25th, at that point, OPM will take a look at essentially what they have, what towns and cities have voted to do, what they've decided not to do, and then provide the appropriate documentation. But I agree, it's, again, these were created by people that have never run a municipal government before, and are dictating down to the towns and cities what we should and shouldn't do. You know, if you have towns that are not financially stable, and let's say they're forced to do one or both of these programs, they could start to have cash flow issues. So now you're forcing towns and cities to potentially have to take on additional short-term debt, just to cover general day-to-day operating costs. So it's, it's going to be a challenge, but thankfully, we'll have at least two, two and a half months to prepare for it. If we have to put a small group of people together, we can do that. If we have to repurpose some people's job descriptions in the month of May and June, when these applications are coming in, we'll certainly do that and take care of that. Just now, I can just add another job to Rory. Al?
Yeah, I just want to add, it sounds like it's a program that's meant to help people, you know, deferring payments with some criteria, and, I mean, what else are, what else is the legislature going to do at this point? I, I think it's, it's well-intentioned, I just think the devil's in the details, we'll see how it sorts out, like you said, will be continual guidance being rolled out, weaken what if it to death all night, but we can only go with what we have now, with what the governor's released, so. If you, if you have anything else to flesh it out for us, that'd be great, give your opinion on it, I'm all for hearing everybody's opinion on it, but it sounds like we have a lot of, you know, there's a lot of work to do up in Hartford still at OPM to roll out regulations and procedures as, to this, so, but you have to do something to help people, or else everybody's going to be in foreclosure, so. Yeah, I'm all for, for assisting our citizens.
Bob?
We may need estimation of what we believe, we're taking a wild-ass, you know, swag on what we believe the impact would be? If we do it in percentage of the town?
We don't. It would be nothing but a wild guess, just because we don't have a full grasp as to who would be actually impacted by this, who's lost their jobs, who's been furloughed, things like that, so that's really what's going to drive this.
The reason I asked that question, then, from a staffing perspective, it does become, that's, that's how you can look at it, of how much impact would, is it truly going to be, or, you know, if we take a guess at it, and what type of staffing we'd need based on the percentages that would take advantage of it.
Right, right. Rich?
The only additional point I want to make, and this will also impact the number of applicants, and, and the impact on the municipality in terms of finances, is, you know, there is a carve-out here, and you don't think about it too often, but you could have taxpayers who are eligible due to household financial loss, who are still current on their mortgages, and who are still making mortgage payments. And under the order, financial institutions and mortgage services that hold property tax payments and escrow on behalf of a borrower are required under the order to continue to remit the property taxes to the municipality, so long as the borrower remains current on their mortgage, or isn't a forbearance or deferment program. This is regardless of whether or not the homeowner is himself or herself eligible under the program. So you could have people who are eligible, who are, who are paying on their mortgage, the escrow is set up, and the bank is required to pay. And most people have mortgages, so that's, that's going to impact the, the extent and breadth of this.
Good point. So any other questions on? Any part of this? No? Okay, so.
I just, it's, Trish, I just have a quick question.
Oh, we can't see you, yeah, sorry, Trish, go ahead.
I'm, I'm sorry, I know this is inconvenient, how I had to call in. Do we have any leeway if we do offer the program to be very specific and clear in the guidelines, so we are not getting applications where people, we, we know that they're going to be declined, we can be very specific, and so people will know if they're going to qualify or not, to try and sway people away that shouldn't be applying?
I think that once we get all the guidance from OPM, I think we'll put together a communication plan as to how we'll roll this out, whether it's, you know, we do things like a Facebook Live, a Code Red Call, we put some stuff out on social media, on the website, so we'll try to provide as much guidance as we possibly can, but I'm sure we will still get some of those applications, and that'll just have to be denied, yeah.
I agree, I just think the clearer we are, we can keep people away from applying that shouldn't be, because they know they're going to be denied. The clearer we are in the communication, hopefully, the more quality applicants we get that really should be considered.
Right. Okay, any other thoughts, comments? Okay, so, I'm just going to do an informal poll, because I don't want to have to read both resolutions if we don't want to do this. So by a show of hands, and Trish, you can, we're going to let, Trish, you can just answer, how many people are interested in taking a vote on the deferment program resolution? So by a show of hands. This is just so I can read the resolution.
Oh, so you should read the resolution?
Yeah, if you want to do, if you.
We have to do one of the two, right?
We have to do one of the two.
I would prefer the deferment program to the law program.
This is just to raise your hand, so he can read them.
Right. All right, so Trish, what do you want to do? Are you okay with that?
Deferment program, fine.
Okay. Is there anyone that has interest in the low-interest rate program? If so, raise your hand. Trish? No one has raised their hand, Trish, since you can't see, okay. All right, so then what, what we'll do then is I will read the resolution that Rich prepared regarding the deferment program, and then we could have any additional discussion and then take a vote. All right, so whereas on March 10th, 2020, the governor of the state of Connecticut declared statewide public health and civil preparedness emergencies, and whereas pursuant, pursuant to such declaration, the governor issued 17 executive orders to dispend or modify state statute, and to take other actions to protect the public health and safety, and to mitigate the effects of the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas on April 1st, 2020, the governor issued Executive Order 7S, which established two programs to offer support to eligible taxpayers, businesses, not-for-profits, and residents who have been economically affected by the COVID-19 pandemic, specifically the deferment program and the low-interest rate program. And whereas Executive Order 7S requires all Connecticut municipalities to participate in one or both of such programs, now therefore be it resolved that the town of Seymour will here and after participate in the deferment program as set forth in Executive Order 7S, by offering eligible taxpayers, businesses, not-for-profits, and residents a 90-day deferment of any taxes on real property, personal property, motor vehicles, and municipal water and sewer charges and assessments from the time that such become due and payable. Such eligible taxpayers, businesses, not-for-profits, and residents shall be those that attest to or document significant economic impact by COVID-19, and/or those that document they are providing relief to those significantly affected by COVID-19 pandemic, as such may be further defined by Executive Order and any guidance received from the Secretary of the Office of Policy and Management. Can I have a motion to approve the resolution as presented?
So moved.
All right, motion by Bob, is there a second?
Anne Marie, second by Chris.
Second by Anne Marie. Is there any further discussion or questions? Everybody's good? Okay, hearing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Bowen, aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay, the chair votes, I motion passes 7-0. Thank you very much, everyone.
Kurt, if, if, Rich Patralla here, if I may, I just want to remind folks that the official form from the governor's office has to be filled out and sent to a specific individual at OPM by no later than April 25, 2020.
Yeah, so Rich, you, myself, and Rory will get together tomorrow, and we'll get that filled out and sent over. Okay, item number seven. Discussion, take possible action regarding resolution to authorize the Board of Finance to adopt the budget and eliminate in-person town meeting and budget referendum in accordance with Executive Order 7I. All right, so again, in your packets, over the last few meetings, we received a memo from Rich. The memo was dated March 24th, 2020, and I'm just going to go through certain parts of it. As you are aware, on March 10th, 2020, the governor issued Executive Order 7C. Pursuant to this order, the legislative body of any municipality is empowered to alter or modify deadlines and schedules pertaining to participation and submission, or excuse me, preparation and submission of a proposed budget, as well as deliberations and actions on the budget by both the legislative body and any other municipal fiscal authority, in our case, that is the Board of Finance. Executive Order 7I, which was issued on March 21st, 2020, further addresses and redefines the budget process. It authorizes the budget-making authority to adopt the budget for July 1st, 2020, from to June 30th, 2021, and to set a mill rate. This authorization of the legislative body, or Board of Selectment in our case, shall be without the requirement of any in-person budget adoption requirements, including but not limited to annual town meeting requiring votes, referendum, and special town meeting. You are the further requires that the budget-making authority comply with public meeting requirements consistent with Executive Order 7B, and take all reasonable steps to publicize the draft municipal budget and receive public comment thereon, including publication of the draft budget on the municipal website, and providing an email address for public to submit timely comments on the proposed budget. Again, the memo that Rich put together was, was four and a half pages, you've all had an opportunity to, to review that. So this is where we currently stand. The question before us is going to be, do we want to turn the budget process over to the Board of Finance to let them make the decision? I've done a little research, just to try to provide some updates, I've had numerous conversations with Bill Zwicki, the chairman of our Board of Finance. I was on a meeting with him last week, and will be on a meeting with them tomorrow night. The mill rate will remain level at 36 mills. They have made some adjustments to that to keep the mill rate level. If you look at just the history of how voting on the budget has gone in the town of Seymour over the last five or six years, I think you'll start to see a pattern. 2015 was the last year that the budget didn't pass on the first try, the municipal side passed on the first try, the Board of Education passed on the second try. The municipal vote was 621 in favor, 563 against. The next four years, so 2016, 17, 18, and 19, both budgets passed on the first time, and what we saw was the percentage remained north of a 2 to 1 in favor, but what we saw is less and less people coming out to vote. In, last year, the vote was 542 for, 225 against. 2018, 529 for, 180 against. 2017, 626 for, 290 against. So again, you could start to see the trend. As there's been consistency in our budget, as we've been able to keep the mill rate level, I think you're seeing less and less people coming out to vote, I think that's just confidence that they have in the teams that we have put in place. With that being said, I'm a little bit more comfortable than normal to turn this process over to the Board of Finance. But again, I want to hear where everyone stands on this before we do that. So again, just raise your hand, and then you can have the opportunity to, to say what you think. So is there anyone that wants to speak, Rob, Vanegan?
Rob Vanegan. I'm going to say this, and I want to be clear that it does not indicate any lack of faith in our Board of Finance, because I think they've done a great job over the course of the years. Even with that trend, and even with all of us knowing that people tend to kind of not pay too much attention, not, all the meetings that we've had for town meetings that people haven't come to, I still want to make sure that there's the ability for people who want to be involved, even when it's low numbers, those people are taking the time to come be part of what's happening. So I'd like to see how things are going to shake out, so that we can make sure people can be part of that process. Again, not that I don't have the utmost faith in the board if we just handed it over to them, but I wouldn't go that route personally. Thank you.
Bill and I have had some conversations on kind of the mechanics, if this were to take place, what would happen? Their plan, assuming this passes, is to meet tomorrow night to get a consensus number, so that way we could put out as much information as possible, to hold a public hearing, which would be on the second Tuesday in the month of May, so essentially three weeks from tonight. The assumption is that we could have that meeting set, we can have all of the documentation out by Thursday or Friday, to basically give folks two and a half weeks to digest it, to make comments. We'll compile all of the comments and actually read them at the public hearing, so that way, you know, anyone who does make a comment will have it put on the record. The board will be able to hear that, their deliberations will be just like this, it'll be in public, so people will be able to hear. At that point, there would be nothing, there would be no vote at that public hearing, and the understanding would be that they would vote at their regular meeting in May. So again, there would be another two weeks in between the public hearing, and when they would actually vote, at that point, residents could make more comments and things like that. So I would expect that giving folks essentially a five-week process should give them enough opportunity to make comments, and to put out whatever information they'd like for the board to hear prior to any vote taking place. Okay, Rob, okay, Rob's giving the thumbs up for anybody who can't see. So what other questions? Chris, go ahead.
Um, Chris Bowen, I just want to state that not only am I comfortable turning this turning this process over to the Board of Finance, I kind of want to plant the bug right now to try this as a trial run to see if this is something that we could be bringing to charter revision to do going forward. Our budget, our budget referendum lately have been steady, but in the past, that hasn't been the case. Some of them have been highly contentious. I think I remember one year failed on the third try, which is practice, is you can't do that, you have to have a budget. Our Board of Finance is elected and there are checks and balances in place for them. So I think I'd like to consider, see how this goes, see how this five-week process goes and maybe, maybe we should consider as a governing body going forward with that going forward.
Yeah, Chris, to build off that point in 2011, so that was for the 2000, excuse me, 2012, I apologize, the municipal side failed three times, the Board of Ed side failed four times before it was, they were finally passed. The year after that, 2013, it took two tries on the municipal side, three on the Board of Ed, so.
And I just want to point out that when the Board of Education budget failed those four times, it couldn't legally go lower. So, and somebody please correct me if I'm wrong on this because I'm going off memory here. When it failed four times in 2011, the third and fourth, the third time it was put forward and failed, it was you, they legally could not go lower and still it was rejected. The Board of Finance is empowered by our charter and by the voters, and I think we should hold to that. I think that's something that we should be watching going forward to see how this works and consider this in the future.
Well, it was a charter revision question was on this past time and unfortunately it was voted down. We talked about some of these things. I mean, Rich has been with us now for nine budget town meetings and we have not had a quorum once. So the fact that we have to add a step in like that is, it's just our charter, the residents didn't want to change it, so, but I agree with you, if this goes smoothly, I think it's something that we should circle back for the next charter revision and put it back in front of the residents. But I think a lot of that again has to do with the budget process that we've actually followed over these last five or six years, how we've been able to put a lot of information out upfront, there's been agreement between the selectmen, the Board of Finance, the Board of Education, and the mill rate hasn't moved. So for most people, that's kind of what they're looking at. If the mill rate doesn't move, well then I'm okay and there's a lot of that apathy out there, so, but that's something that I think we should definitely take a hard look at. So any other comments? No? Okay, all right, so with that, I'm going to read this resolution. It says, whereas on March 10th, 2020, the governor of the state of Connecticut declared statewide public health and civil preparedness emergencies, and whereas pursuant to such declaration, the governor issued numerous executive orders to suspend or modify state statute and to take other actions to protect the public health and safety and to mitigate the effects of COVID-19 pandemic. Whereas Executive Order seven B allows a municipality to suspend open meetings and hold meetings remotely by conference call, video conference or other technology. And whereas Executive Order seven C provides that all budget submission dates may be postponed until approval and modification by the legislative body. And whereas Executive Order seven I provides that notwithstanding any contrary provisions of the general statutes, municipal charter or ordinance, the legislative body of a municipality shall authorize the budget-making authority to adopt the budget for the July 1st, 2020 to June 20, June 30th, 2021 fiscal year and to set a mill rate. And whereas Executive Order seven I further provides that such authorization of the legislative body shall be without requirement of any in-person budget adoption requirement, including but not limited to annual town meeting requiring votes, referendum and special town meetings. And whereas Executive Order seven I further provides that the budget-making authority comply with public meeting requirements consistent with Executive Order seven B and take all reasonable steps to publicize the draft municipal budget and receive public comment thereon, including publications of the draft budget on the municipal website and providing an email address for the public to submit timely comments on the proposed budget. Now therefore be it resolved that the town of Seymour Board of Finance, as the town's budget-making authority, is hereby authorized following public hearing in compliance with Executive Order seven B to adopt the town budget and set the mill rate in accordance with Executive Order seven I. Can I have a motion to approve the resolution as presented?
Motion.
All right, motion by Chris, second by Rob, was that correct, Rob?
Sure, yep.
Yep, okay. Is there any other discussion? Okay, hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, chair votes, I motion passes seven zero. Okay, item number eight, discussion, take possible action regarding resolution to authorizing the issuance of tax anticipation notes in an amount not to exceed $4 billion to pay the town's expenses and obligations for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2020. Okay, so we talked a lot at our last meeting with regards to the use of tax anticipation notes or TANs, that we wanted to have the authorization in hand just in case it is needed now particularly with the tax deferment program going into place. You know, we don't have 100% idea the true impact that that's going to have, but we may need the opportunity to bring some cash directly into the town for cash flow purposes to allow us to keep our operations running. So this is the resolution that we have before us. On the phone with us tonight as well is the town's underwriter from Mesero Financial, John Healy. John's been with us now for five or six years, so he is very well-versed in the town's finances. He's helped architect a lot of the things that we have done over the past couple of years. So, you know, I wanted him here today in case anyone had any specific questions, you can hear it directly from John. If you want to talk at all about, you have questions about the market, anything like that, John is certainly well-versed and can answer a lot of that. So, or if you want to un-click John just in case he has a question, but you know, first before we take questions, John, anything you want to add?
No, first to that. Thank you very much for having me, allowing me to join you tonight. I think you summed it up perfectly, Mr. First Selectman. You know, what this authorization is about is really acting as a hedge against an unknown quantity, which is, you know, what the overall impact of the coronavirus is going to be for the town. And what you, the position you don't want to be in is having to scramble to get an authorization if you need to act swiftly. Conversely, you also don't want to have to issue the notes if you don't need them. So what this does tonight is it just gives authorization to the First Selectman and Treasurer to be able to pursue that course if it's needed. But, you know, I think it's important to underscore both to the board and to anyone from the public listening, that there are no immediate plans to have to issue these. And at the same time, if they are having to be issued, we will certainly pursue every avenue possible, not just a market transaction, but lower-cost alternatives like bank direct placements or lines of credit, should they be available at competitive or more competitive rates. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Right, so if you have a question, again, we'll use the same process, I'll call it out and then you can just ask the question of John. Rob, Ben Egan, go ahead.
Yeah, with these restrictions, regulations, let's just say this comes down the pipe, this would be something that we would turn to just to, let's say, keep the lights on. It's not something where, let's just say, we had all new selectmen next year for something, some crazy COVID-related apocalyptic world. They couldn't say, oh yeah, let's tap that, we, you know, we're already in that approval for four minutes, let's tap that and let's do ABC project. This would be something really just to kind of maintain payroll and keep the lights on that sort of thing.
Correct. So the state of Connecticut statutes strictly govern both the issuance and the use of TANs. When you issue TANs, you have to directly link them to a certain amount of taxes in a certain tax year that you are looking to cover. And then those notes have to be paid within that tax year in which they are being applied. So, so for purposes of this, we are looking to cover any deficiency that might occur, especially between July and October during that deferral period that you guys just passed. And so that would be applied to the fiscal 21 taxes. Those notes would have to be fully repaid by the end of fiscal 21, June 30 fiscal 21.
Thank you.
Al?
Hi, John, thank you for joining us tonight, Al Bruno. I just wanted to ask a quick question, not to get into the weeds, but I was just curious if you could give us a quick summary as a board, how that $4 million cap was arrived at, just so we can explain it to folks if they ask us or, and just for our general knowledge.
Sure, and I'll lean heavily on Kurt here for this one, I don't know if Doug's on either, but, but what the town did was kind of undertake, all right, what's the potential worst-case scenario? You know, when you look at the deferral program, what percentage of homeowners escrow their property taxes with their mortgage so that the town can reasonably expect to get that as opposed to homeowners that directly pay their property taxes? What, if 100% of those don't come in, what impact is that to the town? You know, other places you look at, I mean, we are dealing with really an unknown quantity here and you look at, you know, building fees, health fees, permits, conveyance taxes, you know, all sorts of other revenues, not to mention property tax revenues that you count on year-over-year in your budget, that right now, nobody can tell, can tell anyone what the impact will be, except we know it probably won't be what we expected it to be. So, you know, after Kurt, along with Doug Thomas and the finance office and the rest of the departments came together, it looked like the number was going to be, I think, between two and a half and three million. What you don't want to do is be so fine in the amount of the authorization that it doesn't get you what you need because otherwise, what good, what good would this process be? So we want to go a little north of what we think we might need in a worst case. And so we went up to four, that we thought it was reasonable that we would not exceed for, and certainly if any sort of issuance were to be transacted, we would only issue or the town would only issue that which it needs and reasonably expects to pay back within that current tax year.
And just to kind of build off what John said, you know, Doug did some, some best estimates that he could. He assumed that we would need about $3 million a month to keep the operation flowing. We have, you know, about seven million or so in our fund balance, so we could carry two months. So we were initially, as John said, looking at about three million, but the recommendation between John and Matt Ritter, our bond counsel, said it's better to ask for more and not need it. So that's where the $4 million number came from. And then Rob, just to go back to your earlier comment, we would actually go through our fund balance, our reserves first, before we would get into the TANs. So we would bring that fund balance down to about a million dollars. At that point, we would go out and take the TANs. So again, it's better that we are replacing our own savings account, interest-free, as opposed to taking out TANs and paying interest on it when we have cash available already. So there was some, you know, some estimations as to how much we would need, but again, to the point I think that Bob made earlier, you know, we really have no idea how many people are going to take part in this deferment plan. So while we, you know, we may end up getting a million dollars a month in, in July and August, and then obviously that's going to carry us a little bit further as well. So we thought the four million was a prudent thing to have to kind of cover that, that third month, I would say the month of September, should everything go bad.
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Any other thoughts, comments? No? Okay. All right, so in speaking with Matt Ritter, our bond counsel, we do not need to read the entire resolution as in the past, as we know, these authorizations to borrow are quite long. So I'm to read the title and just refer to it as the resolution in your packet and we'll go from there. And I apologize, my phone's in a wacky spot, so I don't mean to keep messing up my screen. But, so at this point, I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the issuance of tax anticipation notes in an amount not to exceed $4 million to pay the town's expenses and obligations for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2020 that was presented in your packets. I have a motion. All right, so I heard a motion was made by Al, I'm not sure who the second was.
That was me.
Second by Bob Finley. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, chair votes, I motion passes seven zero. John, thank you for your time on the call and for the many years of diligent work that you put in for the town of Seymour, it is greatly appreciated. I don't think we'd be in a strong position without you or your guidance, so thank you for that.
I truly appreciate it, truly appreciate the opportunity and to join you. Please stay safe, Paul, continue what you're doing.
Thanks, John.
Okay, closes item number seven, we'll move on to item number nine. Let's see here. Okay, discussion, take possible action regarding Economic Development Commission recommendation. Okay, as you know, we had a contract with CERC, the Connecticut Economic Resource Center. That contract was to provide essentially an economic development director, was a contracted position, there was a change of leadership and philosophy at CERC. They pulled back all of those contracts and stepped away from all the municipalities that they were working with. They've now switched their model to simply project-based work. So the last day that we had Sadie was December 31st, 2019. Sadie has been available by phone and email and has helped out answering questions and different things like that. So we, you know, we appreciate her continued support. But once we realized they charged the Economic Development Commission with charting a new path forward, what they wanted to do, they asked what my opinion was and I told them I have no opinion, just like the last time, it needs to be something that they think will be successful. So in your package, you have a letter from Christine Almond, who is the chairman of the Economic Development Commission. So I'll read that into the record and then we can have a discussion from that point forward and then make a determination what or if the board would like to have done. So it says, Dear First Selectman Miller, after careful consideration and deliberation, we, the Seymour Economic Development Commission, recommended hiring Sheila O'Malley as a consultant for Seymour Economic Development Director. This was voted, approved and recorded at our February 2020 meeting. We support the idea of bringing Sheila O'Malley on board to represent Seymour and our pursuits to continue, or in Seymour's case, to renew our town's economic development. She has the knowledge and skill set that we feel will benefit our town for growth and also to maintain and continue to cultivate the existing business relationships in Seymour. With our newly updated strategic plan as a template and Sheila's experience, we feel that this will be a successful venture. Sheila has a proven record that shows her commitment to economic development in the valley. We also feel that Sheila's experience with grant writing, she will be able to bring funds to our town that will benefit us as a whole. And then it's respectfully submitted, Christine Almond, Economic Development Commission, Chairwoman. So as we do with all positions in town, particularly at a senior level, and I would consider the Economic Development Director a senior-level position, even if it's a consulting spot, that we put together a hiring committee of some kind, we've done it for community services, we've done it for public works, that's how we hired our human resource director and so on and so forth. So that's where the Economic Development Commission came in. This is simply their recommendation to us as to what we'd like to do. Now, our options are, we could take their recommendation and make this higher, we could ignore their recommendation and continue as we are, we could take their recommendation in as advisement and do additional interviews if you'd like to do. So it's up to the pleasure of the board. So, again, raise your hand and so we'll go Bob Finley.
Yeah, the one thing I, they selected her, what I'd like to see is strategy or a plan associated to the recommendation of what she would be considering as, and then some measurement points where we can keep track of that. We've had other economic development processes that have gone on in the past, and I'd like to see a little bit more of a plan structured with some goal attainment type things associated to it versus, you know, we recommend that. we recommend that person. I think it's important to the process at this point.
Yeah, I think they've been very involved now with creating some vision for the strategic plan, using that as a guide to provide some guidance for that. But I think anyone that we bring on board at this point would be tied to to something like that that is measurable, that we can determine if it's successful or not. So I agree with that 100%.
Yeah. And even before we hire her, I'd like to see some of her thoughts or some direction from her to see, you know, I've talked with her before, and I'd like to see that as a structured plan.
I know some feedback was given at directly to the Economic Development Commission, some recommendations and suggestions, but you know, if the board's pleasure is to move forward with the, to move this process forward, then that's something that we could tie in before any hire or offer is actually made. That's not a problem.
Thanks.
I'm just making, I'm just making. Wait, Trish, hold on one second. I just don't want to lose that thought. Okay, hold on.
No problem.
Okay, go ahead, Trish, sorry.
Okay, I, by no means am suggesting we should follow through of what other towns doing. I'm just questioning if we do not have a position and paying for this position right now, should we be hiring? Because other towns with the pandemic and the slowing down closure of certain functions are actually doing furloughs. So what kind of position are we in to actually be hiring or not having that expenditure right now?
That was not determined by the Economic Development Commission. In my understanding and reading what they're writing is they're looking for a consultant, consultant type position similar to what we had with CERC. That position was budgeted for $30,000. We have $30,000 in next year's budget as well. So there is money that is currently left in that in that blind item for this current fiscal year. And then we can, Trish, we could start this process whenever we choose. So we can say, hey, we want this person up and running from May 1st. We can say, let's not bring this person on board until October 1st. So that is something that we could, we can determine. I don't think it's, it's been set. That good, Trish?
Thank you.
Okay. Rob Van Agen.
Rob Van Agen, what is her current position with Ansonia? And let's say we were to move forward today and say that we want to hire her not as Economic Development Director, but just as a consultant to the town. Do we see any conflicts with that? What do you know about that?
Um, that's, those are things that I, my recommendation before we set a definite yes or no, I would want to have those conversations and be able to report back to the board on that. You know, time wise, I can't speak to specifically what, you know, her schedule is or is not. So those will be questions that I would want to know. We knew with CERC, the contract defined the number, the minimum number of hours that Sadie had to put in with Seymour. Each week she actually did more, it seemed. She was available when needed to be. But again, that was the same model we had with CERC where she had the position in Beacon Falls as well. It didn't seem to be problematic at all with regards to that. I think that the natural thought is, you know, XYZ company is looking in this area and, you know, you're representing Beacon Falls and Seymour, you know, are you put in a, in a difficult spot? We didn't see any of that. A lot of times these folks that are coming in are looking for specific, whether it be pieces of property, specific building size, specific demographics, so on and so forth. So where it could, I think, get a little challenging is in the grant area. Again, if you're writing a grant for Seymour and you're writing a grant for, you know, Beacon Falls in that case, I think that would be a tough thing to do. While I think there's some advantages to having a person that has experience in grant writing, that's one I'd have a little concern with, but. So is that anything else, Rob? I'm just trying to judge your head movement.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, I was making sure you go, um, no, and I do, let me be clear. I absolutely fully support the idea of having somebody well versed in this, start as a consultant to lead. When I saw this in the packet yesterday, I did some research and I did reach out to a couple of people who know her and have dealt with her in the past. I was part of the EDC when she came and gave us a presentation. But again, my feeling right now is that this as presented for us to be voting on, unless I misunderstand what we're voting on, seems premature for what they're, what Christine's asking. I would say I'd need something a little more specific. But I guess if we're just going to vote on, do we want to move forward with discussions? You know, that's one thing. If this was a vote to move forward with hiring her, I'd say no, because I need to have a lot more detail on what we're talking about, what the plan would be for something like that. And also, I, as much as I feel she may be very qualified, I do want to, if we're going to pursue getting a consultant, getting or hiring a director, even though, even though, like Trish said, right now is a really iffy time with what's happening with furloughs and everything. I think now might be a good time to capitalize on that and look at where everything's going and maybe even take somebody who's working somebody else, somewhere else where they might have gotten furloughed and bring them over. So I think there's a lot more research to be done on who we would get, not to disparage Sheila at all. But, um, so bottom line, I think this is a little too vague to agree to bring her on board just yet. I'm done.
Tonight, tonight, all I would be looking for is consensus on the direction of what the board would like to do. I don't have any intention of even putting a motion out to have someone hired or not. I think there are a lot of outstanding questions, but you know, if people are 100% dead set against it, well, then we're not going to waste our time and we can look in a different direction. If people, you know, have some interest in it, but have some questions that have raised, then I'll go and I'll get the answers to those questions, bring them back to the board. And at that point, the board can make another decision as to, does it want to continue down this path? You know, is it, do we want to wait until October to the virus is cleared before we take this on? Is this something that we need right away? Do we, to Bob's point, do we want to see a little bit more direction? You know, from a planning standpoint, things like that. So that's all things we could take into account. So, you know, I'm sure Rory is scribbling down all the questions as you guys are asking them. And if it's something you want us to pursue, then we would go with these questions and come back with specific answers.
Okay.
Chris, I think that was a raised yes.
Yes, yes, definitely.
Either that, either that or you gave me the finger. I wasn't sure.
Not yet. You know. I have a couple of concerns. And I want to preface this by saying that these are largely concerned with perception. We all know that this type of field perception is often reality. What, number one concern I have is just about the town of Ansonia. The town of Ansonia has had to hire a consultant to address some of their issues internally with their finances. I know when Sheila presented to the EDC back in 2018, she stated that wasn't a concern of hers. Their discretionary fund, their quote unquote rainy day fund has come down to a dangerous level. And the consultant that was brought in at the time was you, Kurt. You were brought in to fix their books, uh, fix their books or however you want to say it. You were brought in as a financial consultant. Due to that, I think there can be a perception that.
Here we go.
I'm sorry?
I was talking to my daughter. Sorry.
Okay. Since you worked for Ansonia temporarily and therefore I'm assuming worked very closely with Sheila, for her to come in and work with the town of Seymour does create some perception issues. So what I would ask the board to consider due to that is if we're going to go forward with interviewing Sheila O'Malley and trying to enter negotiations with her, and obviously things have changed since the Economic Development Commission made their vote due to COVID. If we go forward with that, would it be possible to deputize Deputy First Select Woman Draganis to be the authority figure on this negotiation?
I don't have a problem with that. None whatsoever. I mean, I don't.
I want to be 100% clear on this. I trust Kurt Miller. I 100% trust Kurt Miller. I have.
I don't take it the wrong way, so don't worry about that.
Okay, okay. I just want that stated for the record.
No.
I just feel that this is a matter of perception. There's some close relationships here in other business, and I think this is an appropriate step just to ensure that that level of perception is eliminated, that everything is up on the up and up. I think it would be appropriate to deputize Mr. Draganis on that.
That's, I have no issue with that. And I assume Rich doesn't have any issue with that either. To be honest, I think I'm kind of a jerk when it comes to negotiating anyway. So I think people may see that as a positive, those that have sat in the room with me when I negotiate things. I mean, friend or not, I have a fiduciary responsibility to, to protect the town of Seymour. And, you know, if you show up to a negotiation unprepared, that's your fault, not mine. So, but if, listen, if that is a concern for the board, if they feel there's a perception issue with that, I have no problem with Anne Marie and Rich handling the, the negotiation. That's completely fine with me. You know, again, I understand there's the perception issue. But in my opinion, it's about trying to get the best possible talent that you can in these positions. Sheila is talented. She has a proven track record in the communities that she's been in. I do get the perception point of it and some of the comments that she made, but you know, Rich does legal services for a lot of towns. Brian Asteriak does engineering services for a lot of towns, Jim Galligan, you know, Matt Ritter, John Healy. So, you know, we try to bring in what I think is a team of the best of the best. And when you have people of that level, that caliber, unless you're going to pay outrageous sums of money, you have to realize that you need to share them with other communities. I love to have Rich just for the town of Seymour and myself, but I know that that would absolutely require the need for TANs just to cover that bill. So, you know, so that's, that's the way I look at this. So, you know, if the board thinks that, you know, she has the potential to do a good job for us, but has some concerns and some questions that need to be answered first, then we'll get those questions answered. Make sure the board is 100% comfortable. And if there's also some concerns about me doing the negotiations, I have no problem turning it over to Anne Marie and Rich. They're both extremely capable and could get that, get that part done. So if that's the board's pleasure, I, I don't take offense to it. So we have Anne Marie and Bob Finley. So let's let Anne Marie go first and then Bob, you go second. Anne Marie.
So I don't have a problem doing the, the interview with, you know, with Rich, but I don't see how this would affect Kurt because he would not be getting any fiduciary gains out of this as a first selectman. His, his negotiating skills, y'all agree, you know, are they top on some things and some things not? But I don't see how it would, I, I understand because he did work with Ansonia as a consultant because he's good at what he does. Just look at the town's record. He's good at what he does. Who wouldn't want him in a work way? But I don't see.
I took the class. I'm not responding.
Good boy. And I didn't mean it in that way. But I, he wouldn't see any gains from it, but I have no issues doing this.
I do agree with everything that you said there. It's, it's just a matter of perception for me. That's all. There's just been so much back and forth between people in our government and people in their government. And there's no question that Sheila O'Malley has qualifications to do what she's being asked to do by the Economic Development Commission. This is a matter of perception. And whereas Kurt does have a fiduciary responsibility to the town of Seymour, I feel that it's my responsibility as well to bring up something that could potentially cause trust issues with people in town. And whether they're right or wrong, and I think, let me be clear on this, that perception would be wrong. But let's eliminate the question altogether.
I know. That's a good idea.
Yeah, no, I take no offense to it. So Bob.
Yeah, I just want to make it clear. I'm not saying that Sheila's not qualified. I think she could be very qualified. All I'm saying is what for my request is that when we go into contract with somebody that we have a clear set of measures and there's already a formulated plan that we're going to attack, we can, we can track it a little bit differently than we've done it in the past. So that's just my, just want to make sure that's clear.
Okay, so as a course of action then, would you like me to sit down with Sheila and have some initial conversations about some of the options that the board has to see if the answers make sense? If they do, and you want to proceed forward, turning it at that point over to Anne Marie and Rich? Or do you want to just have Anne Marie and Rich run with the ball from the jump? What's the board's preference? And again, I'm fine with either way. Rob Van Agen has his hand up.
Would it work if we were all to submit any questions that we have to you to be able to talk to her?
Absolutely.
I know.
This is not something that would take place right away. Yeah. So, but I mean, yeah, if you have a series of questions or things, or some points or concerns, and you could have a few days to think about it, yeah, just pop over an email to us. And whether it's myself or Anne Marie that does it, we can just use that template to go through and get the answers. Not a problem at all.
Okay. I'd, I'd like to do that. And I'd also like, and I'm not sure what the proper way to do this would be, maybe make a motion. I'd like to have the EDC researcher present to us maybe three options in total for consultant slash director, some, some options like that, you know, what? So we could, other, other options, just to see where we can go. But I do want to pursue a conversation with Sheila regarding our questions.
Yeah, I don't think that'll be an issue. I, I think because of the research they did when they brought CERC on next year, I believe Sheila was their second choice at that point.
Repeat that, Kurt.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, there you go.
I'm moving again. There we go. Sorry. I believe when they initially did the groundwork for CERC and Chris and Rob and Bob, I think you were all involved at that point. You know, Sheila was in that mix at that point, one of the considerations. I think when CERC stepped out of the way, I think they went to what they deemed their option number two at that point, which was Sheila. But I can certainly reach out to Christine and have that conversation with her just to see what else, what other options they looked at. And if you'd like, we could even have Christine, when we get to that point for further discussion, have her on the meeting, at the meeting. And we can have those conversations. You can ask those questions directly to her. I think that would be best. Chris.
I just want to be real quick. I talked to Christine last night. She wasn't at that meeting. Karen Robinson was the person who chaired that meeting. She would be the best person to ask.
Okay. If you look at the minutes, Chris, you were at that meeting too. So that's a whole nother issue we have to address.
Yeah.
The one in February.
You were, yeah, you were obviously at our meeting. So you can't be in two places at once. Yeah.
That's another discussion.
Yeah. Yeah.
Kurt, it may be as simple as a 3690 plan just proposed to the team of what her thoughts are. And that might be simple for us to make the decision so we can see just a, a framework of what she would, what she would try to achieve in her 306090, you know?
Nope, that's not a problem.
Kurt, it's Trish. Is there any reason that the HR director, sorry. Is there any reason the HR director for this kind of position should be involved to take a look?
We could certainly have him take a look. Generally, he does a lot of the screening and tries to find the true strong candidates to get to the interview committee. But yeah, we can certainly run stuff by Chris as well. It's, that's not a problem, Trish. So if, if I'm hearing everything correctly, and if I'm not, someone please, please say so. I'll wait a few days, give everybody the opportunity to send me questions, comments, thoughts. At that point, I will sit down and have that conversation with Sheila, try to get as many answers as I can. I'll bring that back to the board for another discussion. At that point, the board can make a determination as to the validity of those answers. Are you comfortable with them? Do you like it? If not, and if everyone's comfortable and wants to move forward, at that point, we can turn it over to Anne Marie and Rich to kind of handle the negotiations at that point. Or if the board says no. Um, or if the board says no, this is not the direction that we want to go, we can, I can reach back out to Christine Allman at the EDC and say the board would like a, a different direction. So does that work for everyone just as a consensus? All right, thumbs up and okays and Al's having dinner. Okay, and Trish, is that okay with you? Just because I can't see you.
Yeah.
All right, perfect. Okay. All right, thank you very much. All right, so now we get to the quick part of our program. Uh, item number 10 is appointments. We have no appointments before us this evening. Item number 11, tax refunds and abatements. We have none uh before us. Item number 12, uh transfers. We have no transfers before us. Item number 13 is correspondence. We have a few pieces of correspondence. We have check registers um for your review. We have a, an email that was sent to myself and Rory from Chris Pelosi with regards to the salary study. Uh, he had made some commitment to be able to present to us in April, uh, but with the virus, it's been difficult to get all of the information as quickly as he had hoped. Uh, so he's continuing to work on that, but he at least wanted to let the board know that it's just a, a something that's taking a little bit more time than he had anticipated because of the virus. And hopefully we'll have something in either May or June, just depending on when things get kicked back into, uh, to normal. We have a resignation letter um from Christine Barrett, if I'm saying that correctly. She is, she was the Democratic Registrar of Voters. Uh, she resigned effective March 31st and has been replaced by Tom LaPaglia, who was the old Democratic Registrar of Voters. Um, so it's nice to have Tom certainly back in the building. Tom's a good man. Um, and then you have two additional letters. Um, one is from the Fire Marshal's Office and one is for the Board of Fire Commissioners. And it has to do with William King being appointed as a fire inspector. There is a process that has to go through. He's recommended, then he's approved by the Fire Commissioners, then it ultimately comes to us. So at our next meeting, Rory will add uh to the appointment list, adding uh Billy King as a fire inspector. And as we all know, Billy's retired Seymour police officer, longtime member of Great Hill Hoes. So it'll be great to have Billy back helping out uh with town functions. So that closes correspondence. Item number 14, public comments. Rory, is any public comment come in while we've been talking?
No, none that I've seen.
Okay. Uh, with that, we'll go with selectmen's public comments. And just so I don't lose track, I'm going to have you go in the order that you appear on my screen. So we're going to start with you, Anne Marie. I don't mean to throw you off because I know you're not used to going first. Chris, you got a little extra time to think now.
I'm not used to going off first. I would like to, yeah. All right. First, I'd like to sit there and say thank you, Rob Van Agen, so much um from myself as well as Nicole for that generous donation to the police department for all the food as well as to Pub 67. Thank you so much. That was wonderful. I have been taken partaking in the parade brigade. And I will be taken partaking again tomorrow in the parade brigade. There's eight of them tomorrow as well. Oh, yes, I had to mention about the banners. Now, I know we were talking about the emergency management and putting the banners up for them, but also for the seniors, uh, the class of 2020. I know we have 185 graduating students um in Seymour alone. That's not to mention any student that go, that lives in Seymour but does not go to school in Seymour. Shaw, Sacred Heart, Emmett O'Brien, Fair for Prep, et cetera. Um, maybe doing something for them. Have the parents pay for the, you know, the banner or the, the little sign in the ground. Um, but some sort of for them to recognize because I really don't think they're going to have a graduation. And it'd be nice if we can have them going up. If we can't do the banners, have them going up the Seymour High School driveway, right? And have them come into a parade. Everybody stays in their car, so there's still social distancing, right? And have them do it that way. If they go to Seymour High, this way we don't have to worry about students who go out of school, out of school in Seymour. For the students that do go out of school in Seymour, we save the parents if they want, you know, one, then they can pay for one. Um, but just something that, you know, Chris Bowen and I were speaking about as well as Jen Cabrer, she said she'd gladly help out with that.
Yeah, and since we spoke and Anne Marie had talked about this uh yesterday and the day before as well, um, I, I guess an email went out saying that they are having graduation.
They are having graduation.
Yeah, I haven't seen the email, so um we'll, we'll see that if we can find that email, uh, if that is true. And um, you know, that may change things a little bit, but I think if, a- at the minimum, we should be doing the signs.
Mm-hmm.
And I know that Jen has, uh, I believe she has a, a good number of the seniors and their families committed to doing that. So they'll be placing the signs on the kids' front lawns.
She has, um-
Saying Seymour High School graduate.
Yep, 70 of them so far.
Yeah, so she's well on her way with only a couple of days uh of work, so. Uh, but that's something that we're going to look into as well, the banners. Uh, we have um only a certain number of banners. We sold, uh, I believe we're at 15 of the Seymour Strong banners since we put it out uh last night, which is, which is a positive thing. So if we do both, we can just kind of mix and match banners um between the two, the two programs. So again, we will probably put an upcharge on those banners as well, uh, because again, our goal was to try to raise money for the Valley Community Foundation COVID-19 Fund. Um, so, but we will work with the folks at Grant Concepts who are doing the Seymour Strong banners as well. They said they do have the ability to do both at the same time. Um, it's just going to take some specific information from, uh, from each family, but they'll get that when the family calls in to order it if we go down that road.
Right. Is the graduation going to be viral?
I, I, I don't know. I didn't see the email. I just heard-
Choice of words.
Yeah.
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 Sorry.
Um, yeah, I, I, I haven't seen it, so. Um, but it's my understanding that that went out um from Principal Freund. But again, I haven't seen it, so hopefully we'll be able to track it down tomorrow, uh, take a look at it, and then we can kind of go from there.
Okay.
Anything else? Nope, okay. Mr. Van Agen?
Um, Anne Marie, thank you for thanking me. I, uh, it's nice to see that. Um, for anyone who didn't know, I uh gave Pub 67 $1,000 uh to be spent on meals for first responders and 200 to be uh directly for tips for the staff. Um, good people there, always been very supportive, uh, great food, and this is the time to help out uh the restaurants that we care about. Um, so uh, that was nice. They, they were very, very appreciative of that themselves, so that was uh very nice. Um, I, as of, I believe that was today, Themis Claritas is retiring, so congrats to her for her uh 22 years of service. Um, I want to say uh I'm continuing to be very, very proud of the town and the way everybody is coming together and helping each other out uh in the shows of support. I am also continually disappointed in how many gloves and masks I see in parking lots. Um, that's, it's frustrating, um, especially when, when there's, you know, need. Um, I've seen a couple of places that have been dealing with some of the new regulations, uh, numbers of people, aisles and things. And I'd like to stress to the citizens, please, please adhere to them. Um, just being in stop and shop uh as little as I can. Uh, as soon as I follow an arrow down an aisle, somebody's coming at me the other way. So just come on, it, let's get through this together. Let's work together so people can try to be a little more cognizant of that and uh throw their gloves and masks out, turn them inside out, throw it on the floor, take care of it when you get home. Uh, it's a pretty town, let's not uh mess it up. Um, and another thing uh regarding the sirens, I understand uh last Saturday uh when the firehouse uh rang its siren uh at eight, I believe it was at it, right at eight o'clock, um, I believe there was a noise complaint. Um, and while I want to be sympathetic to that, and I know people have certain schedules with uh sleep and work, uh, I would ask that everyone, anyone who might have a problem with that, see that uh in this case, especially for what is honestly a trauma a lot of people are dealing with who are stuck in their homes for extended period of time, um, let, let's just kind of let that go, you know, maybe earplugs or something if it's, if it's that bad. And uh, let's let that sound help bring as many people together uh as they can. Um, so I'm going to just kind of publicly voice my support for that, uh, for the siren and the continuation of it. And um, thank you very much.
Thank you, Rob. Uh, Chris?
So um, first off, especially uh thank you to Rob Van Agen, who um I've always been calling Captain Charity for all the work that he's done with so many churches, so many groups. He got me involved in team, um, which I'm extremely thankful for. Uh, thank you to Anne Marie, you know, she, you know, she mentioned, we've, we talked a couple of days ago about um trying to do something for the seniors, trying to do something for the banners. I'm working now, I've already sent out a couple of emails about um just finding out from the schools themselves how many students we have, just so we have the numbers in front of us. Um, thank you to Al Bruno for your efforts in trying to help Department of Public Works, uh, show our appreciation for them. I love this damn community. It's just an awesome town, and I appreciate that more now as an adult than as a kid. But the one point that I want to especially belabor is that it's very easy to dismiss COVID-19 if you don't, if you haven't seen the impact it's made. Um, we have a very close family friend who um, my wife was the maid of honor at their wedding, and his father, the, the husband is a cop. Their father is, has been on a ventilator for two weeks. And I've seen the, this is a strong guy, okay? He's, you know, in his mid-50s, but he's athletic. He's the kind of guy who, if you called him an a-hole, he would thank you for the compliment. He's just that kind of guy. Um, and he's stuck on a ventilator for two weeks, and I've seen the impact that it's had. And I've seen just how it's brought this very strong man to his knees. And it's just 24/7 until they take him off to, you know, just to see if he has his cognitive abilities. This is not a freaking joke. And to see gloves and to see masks, I know it's a vast minority of people. And especially in the news, we've had the protests, um, the anti-social distancing protests. I ask people that are inconvenienced right now that, to consider that this is much worse for a lot of people. And people are dying. Very good, very strong people are dying, and they're dying horribly. And it's really affecting the people that I love. And I'm not going to say I didn't appreciate that this was bad before this, having seen it now. Please clean up your gloves. Please clean up your masks. Please social distance, please. The arrows are on the damn ground. They, they tell you where to go. And I understand that's offensive to some people, but if we can get through this, it'll all go away. We can open up the parks again. We can open up the um, community centers again. We want to do that. Nobody wants them closed. But that's not going to happen if we're intentionally wanting regulations and requests to distance. And if we keep doing that, if certain people keep doing that, I just saw the result. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Uh, Bob Finley?
No, I was, um, I was happy to see the uh Fire Police Brigade lucky enough that it was on my street uh this weekend. So it was great to see uh every, every house came out and stood outside their house. And it was great to see everybody all together and talking and um at a distance, of course. Um, but that was, that is a great thing for the community. I think that works very well, and we should continue to do that as we can. And I also wanted to make sure as a team where we are start thinking about, and again, I think it's, you know, of, of all times, now's the time to start to think about uh the plan to reopen and what that's going to be in relationship to, you know, what the state's going to have regulate and, you know, how we, how we are going to reopen so that when it, we do have the opportunity to reopen, that we have a really good structure of how we're going to do it. Um, I think that's going to be important to us. And whenever it is that, that's, it's whenever that it happens. But I do like to think, I, I do think we should consider what that plan will be as a, as a group. Um, so I'd like to make sure we make a recommendation that we do talk through it and we think through it as a team. That's all I have.
Thank you, Bob. Al?
Thank you, Kurt. I just wanted to make sure I thanked uh Trish and Alex Danka for their ideas regarding the Seymour Strong banners. Uh, it's a great idea to show solidarity around the town. Uh, my wife Kristen and I will be participating in sponsoring a banner, and we're proud to do so. Uh, goes to what Rob was talking about and everybody else about showing support for each other and doing things the right way to help eradicate this um virus as quickly as possible. Yeah, it's, it's inconvenient, but it's better than um situations of some people who are now fighting and uh those who have lost a battle to it. So let's, let's uh keep it in perspective. I'd also like to talk about the birthday uh parades. I took uh part in my first one today for uh little Luke Carson, turned 10 today. So happy birthday, Luke. Uh, I think it's a great idea. He was just ecstatic, his mom Beth, and uh texted me after and said he was so happy that um he was able to, to have that, and it's just a big deal to him. And that's hard for kids, not being able to have parties and get gifts and run around with their friends. It's just part of being a kid. And just a great idea. Another, another example of Seymour stepping up to the plate for kids, just a, a wonderful kids-centric community to begin with. Not surprising, so kudos to everybody who does that. Uh, and lastly, um, Nicole Claritas Dittria and Anne Marie Dragonis had a great idea to make sure we took uh care of our Public Works Department, got them some gift certificates for uh food. Everybody on the Board of Selectmen has chipped in. Thank you so much, including Nicole. It was just a small thing that the group wanted to do to, to thank Tony Di Primo and his crew down there for keeping our town uh pristine even in a pandemic, that they practice social distancing. Tony's got them doing things the right way, uh, does nothing but make us proud. And um, so we're happy to do that. We're going to get those gift certificates down to Tony to disseminate to the guys um either tomorrow or Wednesday. So I just wanted to let you guys know that. Thank you for your participation. And other than that, you know, stay safe, um, be smart, and, and hopefully, you know, we're, we're going to get through this together, as Seymour Pink says, and they're right. So thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Al. Uh, Trish?
Hi, thanks. Um, I just want to mention that we have a lot of people in town continuing to go to work. I mean, there's town employees at Town Hall who are still working. We've got the custodians who are going in and working on uh, you know, multiple buildings, making sure everything's clean and safe for everybody pretty much seven days a week. And also, we've got a lot of volunteers, uh, there, well, not before I say volunteers, Police Department, they're seven days, 24 hours. We've got um our volunteer entities in town, the Fire Department, the um Emergency Management Director. I, um, I just, there's, I, I can't name them all. We just have so many good people in town, and I, again, I'm just proud to be a resident in Seymour. And thank you to even um all of our residents who are getting up and either helping their neighbors, continuing to go to work and just doing everything we can to keep Seymour what it is. So I'm very appreciative. Um, everyone's in my prayers and um, okay, enough about that. I did have one question for Rob though, um, or, but I'm sorry, for Bob. Bob, did you get your appointment letter for strategic planning? Because I got one in the mail. And at the last meeting, uh, we decided I wasn't getting appointed and you were.
I did not get anything in the mail.
Okay, so Kurt, can we make that correction and get, get Bob a, a letter to?
Uh, Bob in Louisville? Bob, in lieu of a letter, you are, you have been appointed.
Okay.
So consider this your letter.
Thank you.
Great. So now, now you have to go in the Town Hall and take your oath, I think, right? So.
Yeah, you do.
Yeah, or Rich can swear him in right now.
That's right.
So, but yeah, the, I checked in the minutes, there is a cross-out that signifies that we took Trish off and we added, we added Bob in for strategic planning, so.
Yep.
So.
Okay.
That should be squared away.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Trish, anything else?
No, that's my very long speech this evening. I'm again honored to be on the Board of Selectmen with all of you. I think everyone's doing everything they can to rise above the occasion and Godspeed.
Thank you, Trish. Rich, anything you'd like to add?
Just for everyone to continue to be well, be safe, and stay strong. This is a super board, and Seymour has so much to be proud of, and it's an honor and privilege to work with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Rich. Rory, anything we've missed?
Nope.
Okay.
Kurt, I have one more thing I have to say. I'm sorry.
Oh, Anne Marie, go ahead.
I'm sorry. Just Rob and I were going back and forth, kind of, you know, having some fun with the transfer station here. And I want to say, it has been on the Seymour Moms page a lot about the transfer station. The transfer station is up and running, normal hours, normal times, as they have. As Kurt stated about the bulk pickup, we are going to delay. It's better to keep our guys safe than having, as we know, Antonia had two Public Works employees that came down with the COVID-nineteen. And I was, I, I got taken off guard by going first, but I want to say that, you know, you're right. Themis is retiring after twenty, twenty-two years in the, in the Senate, but, you know.
Legislature.
Legislature, sorry. I'm still off-guard. Alana threw me off again. But I do have to say, I am very proud, and she is such a wonderful role model for all of us. But I don't think this is going to be the end of her political career, but we'll see. That was it. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Wow. Okay, a motion was made by Anne Marie, a second was sung by Chris. Is there any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Bruno's hungry.
Aye. Aye, isn't I gotta eat?
I marked the meeting closed at eight forty-two. Thank you very much, everybody. Have a great night. Stay safe.
Thank you, guys.
You guys.